All our meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, May 26, 2015, and it's approximately 7:04 PM. We also, this evening for the invocation is Pastor Saul Hodge. And right after the invocation, I will ask everyone to remain standing for the pleasure of allegiance. Pastor?
Ladies and gentlemen, here we are, here again. Just want to thank God for how He brought us through to another year. If you bow in prayer, you know that God can do anything but fail. That's why we pray. He's ahead of our life. Now, Father, in the name of Jesus, right now, as we stand here in Your presence, in Your presence, and when we are strong, in Your presence, in Your presence, that where we belong, in Your presence, seeking Your faith and touching Your grace in the cliffs of the rock. Now, Father, right now, as we come into Your presence, right now, in this building here now, we thank You, Father, for being so good, so good, so understanding. We thank You, Father, for our mayor. We thank You, Father, for everyone that's working beside His side. We thank You, Father, because they is going to do a great job this year than they did last year. We want every year to be better and better. And we thank You right now, as we come to You right now, in the name of Jesus, strengthen this and encourage our heart that we can stand strong together and do what is right and right and pleasant for this city of Reading. Now, right now, Father, we lean and depend on You, that You will see us through. Yes, it can get a little rough sometimes, but, Lord, we're going to keep our hands in Your hand, and You will lead us into greener pastures. Now, right now, Father, as we stand here, Father, into this meeting, Lord, I want you to touch every person that are here tonight. Help us, oh, Lord, examine ourselves tonight and see where we had tonight. Lord, help us to do better today than we did yesterday. And we give You the praise, Father. Help us to stop pointing finger or blame at others. But, Lord, grant us all the courage to do our part and make our home, our church, our community and this city to become a better place. And we give You the praise and the glory and the honor. In Jesus' name can we all say, "Amen." Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to every public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. Daubert?
Here.
Ms. Goodman-Henshitz?
Here.
Mr. Marmarou?
Here.
Ms. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Sterner?
Here.
Mr. Waltman?
Here.
Mr. Pastor President?
Here.
Seven A's, seven present, none absent.
It's cool. Councilwoman Donna Reid, Council Vice President Waltman, and Councilwoman Goodman-Henshitz joining at the bottom.
I am passing on a City of Reading commendation from the office of the mayor. Whereas the City of Reading publicly re-recognized and honors Maria Cantner for her career with the Civil Service Patrol for over 14 years, serving as the commander of her squadron for the past seven and a half years, and since she is a mother of two sons and two stepsons and has four grandchildren, proud of the fact that she has been well-supported in her civil air patrol career, and whereas she participated in numerous state, region, and national events such as Hawk Mountain Ranger School, the Pennsylvania Wing Glider Encampment, the Northeast Region Glider Encampment, the International Air Cadet Exchange, and the national legislative event held in Washington, DC. And whereas Maria works full-time for the City of Reading as the Municipal Operations Manager, she has also served for various community councils, including the Boy Scouts of America, the Bogota Federal Credit Union, and the County of Perks Tax Collection Committee. And whereas Maria has served the City of Reading and the community with great dedication and distinction and serves as an example of others to follow, now, therefore, the mayor of the City of Reading and city council do hereby recognize the dedication and the humanity of all people for the City of Reading, former Maria Cantner.
Thank you, thank you. I'll keep it short. I know you have enough to go over tonight. I just want to thank the mayor and council for this honor. Truly means much to me as an employee of the City of Reading. I also like to thank some of my members of Civil Air Patrol for their support, which couldn't have done it without them. And I'll use this opportunity to advertise Civil Air Patrol. It's a great leadership program for children 12 years of age and older. We follow the customs and courtesies of the US Air Force. We do homeland security, emergency services, and the community service in addition to aviation education. So, thank you.
Are the owners of Dino's Wings and Things here? Okay, we'll present this, and I will be glad you drop this off. This is from the government of the City of Reading. We're congratulating the owners, Gordo and Gil Acarino, for opening their newest establishment in Reading, and that's on Center Avenue in the Great Fifth District. And as they carry out their mission to provide the best food in atmosphere possible, we know that small businesses are the backbone in the American economy, cornerstones of our nation's promise of future, and therefore, we know that Dino's Wings and Things, which is originally based in Muhlenberg and now is a satellite facility in Riverside area, will play a key role in our community by creating a sense of civic identity and pride, enhancing the visual image of the City of Reading, exposing more individuals to new tastes, attracting and maintaining business in the community, especially in Riverside area. We're calling upon the good people of Reading to join us in congratulating the folks associated with Dino's in making this endeavor a reality, and we wish them all the best. I hope everybody goes out there, buys their wings and things, and supports the City of Reading and especially the great community of Riverside. So, I'll be happy to blow these.
We move then to the public comment segment of our agenda. Mr. Daubert?
Citizens have the opportunity to address the council by registering with the city clerk by 5:00 PM on the day of the scheduled council meeting, or by legibly printing their name, address, and the subject matter to be discussed on a sign-up sheet found on the podium in council chambers between 5:00 PM and 7:00 PM on the day of the scheduled meeting. All remarks must be directed to council as a body and not to any individual council member or public or elected official in attendance. Any person making personally offensive or impertinent remarks or any person becoming unruly while addressing council may be called to order by the presiding officer and may be barred from speaking before council unless permission to continue speaking is granted by the majority of vote of council. All comments by the public shall be made from the speaker's podium. Citizens attending the meeting may not cross into the area beyond the podium. Any materials to be distributed to council must be given to the city clerk before the meeting is called to order. Those commenting on agenda business shall speak at the beginning of the meeting and shall limit their remarks to five minutes. Those commenting on general matters shall speak after the legislative business is concluded and shall limit their remarks to three minutes. No comments shall be made from any other location except the podium, and anyone making out-of-border comments may be subject to removal. There will be no demonstration, including applause or cheering, at the conclusion of anyone's remarks. Citizens may not ask questions of council members or other elected or public officials in attendance.
Mr. Daubert, as a courtesy to the citizens, and assuming the council is okay with it, we only have two non-agenda matters speakers, so rather than making them wait until the end of the meeting, we will do them now. With that, the first speaker is Mr. Peter Hart. The subject is UGI gas meters. And, Mr. Hart, you have three minutes. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you so much for having me this evening. I come to you pleading to help me out with a problem that I've been having with UGI, as in many citizens in this fine city have been having with gas meters being removed from our houses and being placed outside our houses. I live at 317 North Fifth Street. I have a rental property. There's going to be four meters out front of my house. In addition, every single house in the 300 block of North Fifth Street, I don't want to say every house, but the majority of them are rentals, multiple meters are out front. The last time you all discussed this matter, there was an ordinance presented, and it was decided that you weren't going to do anything based off of the language of the PUC's regulations. On September 13th of 2014, the PUC adopted new language in their rules and regulations specifically targeting historical districts in cities. With your permission, I'd like to read briefly what the language is that pertains to historical districts and inside meter locations. In Section 59.118D of the PUC rules, it states, "An inside meter location shall be considered only when (a) an outside location is not available, (b) a property is listed or eligible for listing in the National Register of Historical Places, (c) a property is located within a historical district that is listed or is eligible for listing in the National Registry for Historical Places, and (d) a property has been designated as historic under the Pennsylvania Historical District Act, Municipal's Planning Code, or Municipal Home Rule Charter." Ladies and gentlemen of city council, every historical district in the City of Reading qualifies for three of these four exclusions to be allowed to place meters inside the house. When I brought these rules up to UGI, UGI's response was, "We don't care. It's a legal matter." Thank you, ma'am. "You have to take it to court." I don't have the funds to take this to court. So, they're ignoring their own rules by saying, "We're not federally listed." But as you can see, the rules state that we are eligible, to be federally listed, and I beg you to please help me in this situation, and I ask that city council do everything in their power to put in place safeguards to protect the city's historical districts from this quote-unquote "progress." And also, I ask that this city council decides that you are willing to stand behind whatever decision you make, because if you can take the mayor to court over a couple of mis-hires and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, I would hope that you'd also be willing to spend that exact same money protecting an asset as important to this city as the historical districts are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Our next speaker is Ms. Elizabeth DeLazio, and the subject is noise pollution at Evergreen Power Plant. Good evening.
Hello. I'm Elizabeth DeLazio. I was last here before city council on May 21st, 2014, for the exact same issue. I sent my piece. I was given a lovely little letter in the mail about a week later, signed by someone in city hall. I believe it was from the mayor's office. And absolutely nothing. I've never had any contact, no kind of response as to how this plant is allowed to operate within earshot of residences and disturb our quality of life the way it does. I recorded it last Wednesday, and I'd really like to play it for you for a moment. It's just unbelievable. This started at probably 7:00 in the evening and went on until about 2:00 in the morning. I have to have my television on in my bedroom so that I can fall asleep, because the noise from the plant, with every window in my house shut and with heavy-duty blinds that we purchased to keep the sound out, is still extremely loud. I'm going to play a recording that I made. I was sitting in my office. My office is in the front of my home, and the other side of our street in the 600 block is Canal Street Restaurant. So, the sound not only is horrible, it hits that building and then just bounces back. So, when I started recording this, you were hearing, you are going to hear the silence of me being at my desk, and then I get up, go off to the front door, and open the door. This is the sound from inside my home on Wednesday, May 20th, at 8:35 PM. With the windows and all the doors shut, this is the sound you hear when you open the front door from the community Evergreen Plant. That sound is from the front of my house. The sound in my bedroom is at the back of my house, with all my windows shut and the blinds pulled. That's the same sound I hear in my bedroom. That sound is with windows shut. This plant was put up in our neighborhood with not one concern of the people that live there. You want to come into our neighborhood and tell us that we can't have vinyl siding and we can't have certain color paints and all these other things, but yet no one cares about what we're exposed to from that plant, not even going to mention the toxins that are burnt there, the tractor trailers that drive down our block and have put potholes in our street. Tractor trailers drive down our street every day going to that plant, and that's what the industrial collector's for. Who's going to give me answers? Who's going to give us the answers? I know I speak for a lot of people in my neighborhood. I've talked to them. Thank you.
Moving on with the approval of our agenda. At this time, is there any addition or deletion that need to be made to the regular meeting minutes of May 11th, 2015? Seeing none, is there any opposition on approving our regular meeting minutes? Seeing no opposition, our minutes are then approved. In terms of our agenda for this evening, I don't think that we don't have any changes or anything that we added. So, is there any opposition on approving or to approve our agenda for this evening? Seeing no opposition, our agenda for tonight is then approved. In terms of consent, agenda legislation, we have a resolution adopting a process to clear the zoning backlog for rental properties within the city, and a war of contract for the PennDOT-funded Penn Street Lighting Project to MBR Construction Services at a total amount of $867,847. And approving the appeal of the Hart certificate for 633 South Sixth Street. In terms of administrative report, the mayor is properly excused, and he sent his administrative report, of which you all have a copy. You want to say something? Madam Mayor, Director?
Thank you. If I can just emphasize one thing that was included in the mayor's administrative report, because I think it's important to the public. There is a discussion in here about how we're expanding the fire department's smoke detector program, and I think it's so important for people to understand both smoke detectors and combination smoke CO2 detectors are now available through the fire marshal's office for any owner-occupied, single-family dwelling in the city, and the installations will be properly made by fire department personnel while they are on duty. So, please take advantage of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we move then to the report from the office of the [inaudible]. Mr. Seto, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President. I'll also try to be somewhat brief as well. Update in admissions fees or taxes during the month of April. We got over $9,400 in Reading fighting fills for April admissions fees. Over $34,800 came in between the St. Tander Arena and Performing Arts Center. Priorities events, the Panthers Indoor Football, Beer Fest, Gordon Brothers Circus, Old School Hip-Hop in Sesame Street, Linton Marsalis, Jeffrey Osborne, Kedeshi Trucks Band, Mythbusters, Reading Symphony Orchestra, just several of the events held in those two arenas in the month of April. Over $9,100 in Reading Royals. As of end of April, $197,129,93. Budget and benchmark only $325. We should exceed that, which is good news. Also under good news, real estate transfer taxes, $234,429,18 came in. There were 174 properties sold in Reading in April. $125 were taxable. Four months, January through April, $1,034.40 and .67 cents. Budget and benchmark 1.9, so we're slightly over 50% with eight months to go. Will exceed budget there as well. Also provided 2011/14 Act to transactions in dollar amounts. Third and final page, unemployment compensation. The first quarter bill came in and was paid $20,710.38. Annual budget is $100,000. For the past five years, we have underspent, which is a good thing. Our unemployment budget line item is provided 1996 to 2015 historical data. And lastly, two other reports were issued by the Office of the City Order last Monday at the Audit Finance and Budget Committee meetings. One pertained to waste water treatment plan capital expenses. $6.9 million spent in the year 2014, $46.7 million since 2008. The second was an annual report required, which is the annual appropriations report of the 75 transactions, which were modifying the original 2014 budget. All 75 were done completely and accurately and per the proper procedures and ordinances. That totaled over $42 million, but the majority of that was when we created what we call the retail sewer fund, Fund 55. And all of those documents and others will be presented shortly on the city's website, www.reddingpa.co. That is my brief report. I'm open for questions.
Is there any questions for Mr. Seto? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Seto.
You're welcome.
Moving on, ordinances for final passage. The first one is Bill Number 23, 2015, amending the Chapter 212 Fiscal Code, Section 123, Police Department Miscellaneous Fees Regarding Copies of Police Reports, Call Recording, and Background Reports, introduced at the May 11 regular meeting, hybridized of May 18. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Marmarou.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodman-Henshitz. Any comments? As we discussed, this is more like a housekeeping type of thing and making some changes to, I guess, make it more realistic to the cost that we incur as we conduct all these reports and provide copies and services. If there's no questions or comments, do we have a roll call, please?
Motion was made by Councilor Marmarou, seconded by Councilor Goodman-Henshitz, to an Act Bill Number 23, 2015, which increases the police report and recording fees and the fee schedule. Mr. Marmarou?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mr. Daubert?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman-Henshitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marmarou?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Sterner?
Yes.
Mr. Waltman?
Yes.
Mr. Pastor President?
Yes.
Seven A's, no N's.
Bill Number 24, 2015, authorizing the transfer of $4,585,914 among debt service accounts based on refinancing bonds 2008 C and D with bond 2014. Refinancing a portion of bonds 2008 and RRA 2003 lease revenue with bond 2015 A, and refinancing pension obligation bond 2006 with bond 2015 D, introduced at the May 11 regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodman-Henshitz. Thank you, Ms. Reed. Any comments or questions? Madam Mayor, Director?
This sounds like a huge transfer of money, but this really simply reflects the new accounts that were required to be established when we refinanced old bonds, so we needed a new accounting set up.
Roll call, please.
Motion was made by Councilor Goodman-Henshitz, seconded by Councilor Reed, to an Act Bill Number 24, 2015, which authorizes a budget transfer related to the bond refinancing. Ms. Goodman-Henshitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marmarou?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Sterner?
Yes.
Mr. Waltman?
Yes.
Mr. Daubert?
Yes.
Mr. Pastor President?
Yes.
Seven A's, no N's.
Bill Number 25, 2015, amending the City of Reading Code of Ordinances, Chapter 5, Administrative Code, Section 5, 806, fiscal provision for consistency with the purchasing policies and policies to and incorporating provision recommended by the city's Act 47 Coordinator as attached, introduced at the May 11 regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Thank you, Mr. Daubert. Any comments or questions?
Madam Mayor, Director?
These changes to the administrative code are really just to document policies that have largely been in place for several years and were followed, but inadvertently were never memorialized, so this is a housekeeping in many ways.
Mrs. Goodman-Henshitz?
Yes, and I think it's very important that we codify all these to be able to have the strong legal ground as far as policy and procedure and be consistent with the Act 47 plan.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Motion was made by Councilor Reed, seconded by Councilor Daubert, to an Act Bill Number 25, 2015, which amends the city's financial provisions for consistency with the purchasing policies and the recommendations of the Act 47 Coordinator. Mr. Marmarou?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Sterner?
Yes.
Mr. Waltman?
Yes.
Mr. Daubert?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman-Henshitz?
Yes.
Mr. Pastor President?
Yes.
Seven A's, no N's.
Bill Number 26, 2015, amending the 2015 fiscal year employee position ordinance by reclassifying the human relations investigator from one full-time position to one part-time position, introduced at the May 11 regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Daubert and seconded by Ms. Reed. Do we have any comments? Madam Mayor, Director?
Thank you. These are changes that were recommended by and requested by the executive director of the Human Relations Commission so we could move forward to hire a qualified investigator to help with the workload at the Human Relations Commission.
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Motion was made by Councilor Daubert, seconded by Councilor Reed, to an Act Bill Number 26, 2015, which amends the position ordinance by moving a full-time investigator to a part-time investigator in the Human Relations Office. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Sterner?
Yes.
Mr. Waltman?
Yes.
Mr. Daubert?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman-Henshitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marmarou?
Yes.
Mr. Pastor President?
Yes.
Seven A's, no N's.
Bill Number 27, 2015, authorizing a budget transfer of $35,918 from salary to temporary wages in the Human Relations Budget to fund the part-time investigator position, introduced at the May 11 regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Daubert.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Any comments? Basically, I guess that this is just to cover
Yes.
the position that we voted on the one before. Roll call.
Motion was made by Councilor Daubert, seconded by Councilor Reed, to an Act Bill Number 27, 2015, which authorizes a budget transfer in the Human Relations Department. Mr. Sterner? Mr. Waltman?
Yes.
Mr. Daubert?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman-Henshitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marmarou?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Pastor President?
Yes.
Seven A's, no N's.
Bill Number 28, 2015, authorizing a budget transfer of $75,000 between the above two accounts. This transfer has zero effect on general fund budgeted spending to demolish the four properties on East Laurel Street due to the recent fire, introduced at the May 11 regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Marmarou. We need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodman-Henshitz. Any comments? Madam Mayor, Director?
Thank you. This transfer actually takes money out of the city's contingency that we established at the beginning of the year for emergencies and moves it into the demolitions account so we can demolish those homes that were damaged by fire. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Motion was made by Councilor Marmarou, seconded by Councilor Goodman-Henshitz, to an Act Bill Number 28, 2015, which authorizes a budget transfer to allow the demolition of the fire-damaged properties on East Laurel Street. Mr. Waltman?
Yes.
Mr. Daubert?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman-Henshitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marmarou?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Sterner?
Yes.
Mr. Waltman? Mr. Acosta, President?
Yes.
Seven A's, no names.
That day goes through council...
Yeah.
Oh, resolutions. Resolutions, and I asked the body to authorize me to take this as a block, and we all agree. So following that, we had three resolutions. The first one is appointing R. David Myers to the Creeds Authority, appointing David Farrar to the Main Street Board, and reappointing Mrs. Elizabeth Stanley to the Charter Board. Do we have a motion?
You do.
Thank you, Mr. Marmaroo. We need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodman-Henshitz. Mr. Marmaroo?
Again, I was truly amazed with the candidates that are up for nomination now for boards. At one time, we just asked questions. Now we have a battery of questions that we ask the people that are registered and serve it. And I was truly amazed, the first two candidates are new appointees, and we asked them about the positions, and just like that, everything they answered is something that we were looking for when we asked them, when we asked these questions. And again, I believe we are making a good appointment, both of these gentlemen. The third one is a reappointment of Elizabeth Stanley to the Charter Board. She's been on this board for, I believe, six years. Do you serve on that board before?
No, no, I was new on that board. I was on it for you.
Okay, but she's been there quite a bit, and now she is the chairperson. She had her hands full all year, and I believe she did her job and she will continue doing her job, and she's a good appointee, reappointed.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Motion was made by Councilor Marmaroo, seconded by Councilor Goodman-Henshitz, to adopt Resolutions 55 through 57, 2015, which make appointments and reappointments to the boards and authorities. Mr. Daubert?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman-Henshitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marmaroo?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Sterner?
Yes.
Mr. Waltman?
Yes.
Mr. Acosta, President?
Yes.
Seven A's, no names.
With that, we move to brief council comments. I don't know if I'll be able to stay until then, because I actually went to the planning meeting. If that's the case, are we leaving now? Mr. Waltman?
Just the gentleman's comments about the gas meters. You know, there was a gentleman on my block who, this is about three months ago, requested that the meter be put inside. He was told it couldn't be put inside. We haven't had time, this was right after the budget season, so it was a little longer than three months ago, but we haven't had time to revisit UGI, but unfortunately, I think we have to, and I think maybe next week in strategic planning, if time allows, we need to do that. It isn't just the historic districts, but it certainly is beginning to invade the historic districts. I'm hearing about their disposition time and time again. I don't know if I'm just hearing the same attitude from everybody erroneously, or there truly is an attitude going on.
There's a problem. Someone must Google all my people.
Yeah, so the city's been shredded by these meters. In fact, I think we've had more meter accidents since we put these things outside than we've had resolutions. So I know we rang this thing out a little bit, but the historic districts certainly are protected from placing these meters directly out front of these buildings. The 300 block of North Street, as everyone knows, should be a postcard. We have other problems there with litter and trash and everything else, but the last thing we need to do now is put a bunch of meters there as well. So let's get back on it, let's make it a priority. I think either we tackle it this time, or we will be the meter capital of the world, is what we said last time.
Thomas Coleman, Aaron Booth, and myself are working on an ordinance. We should have that ready for the next meeting.
Oh, that's beautiful. See, that ask and you shall receive. We need that sooner than later, yeah.
I guess that my concern is that we keep it real, because although I think that if we will take a vote right now, we'll end up 7-0 in terms of not allowing this to happen, but we also need to be, I mean, we need to understand what are the powers of state, especially the Pennsylvania Utility Department Commission. And we indeed tried to put off a fight a few months ago, or last year sometime, sometime last year, and legally, we were not able to win that battle. So it's not about not going and fight for the citizens, it's whether or not we can. The fact that we are tired of seeing these meters popping up throughout the city like Christmas trees, yeah, I think that we are, that we're on that level. Cotton Street is a great example, North Fifth Street, I seen it now on Schuylkill. I mean, at the very beginning, I thought that they were targeting low-income areas, and you can interpret that as however you want to do so, but now I'm seeing these meters in affluent areas too. So, and part of the problem with this, and I'm doing this because I do have to leave, so Mr. Waltman will finish the meeting as the chair, they can react this way, as the gentleman reacted to Mr. Hart, because it's not UDI, it's not PUC, it's three ledgers under all that with a third contractor or sub-sub-sub-subcontractor standing in front of your hovels, and basically that's the answer he's going to give you. Get your attorney. I mean, I know the game that they're playing. So if we're already working on a legislation to try to stop that, let's see how powerful we can make it and if we can defend the interest of our people, our business owners and citizens. Mr. Marmaroo? And Jeff, could you chair the...
Yeah, I'll close it for you. Yeah.
And I just feel like we have done what we can, but it may not be enough. The challenge, and I think the gentleman that spoke said that, the attitude that we have to take them to court to be able to protect our city when they are a state agency that's reportable to government entities, just really speaks to the fact that we need to move ahead and have some discussion. Cotton Street was an example of what can happen and what we knew would happen to the rest of the city. The city has taken steps in putting in place an ordinance to be able to at least have the streets repaired, but that's not enough. We've had accidents now that have happened since the meters have gone in. We need to get an update and then be able to decide what we need to do legislatively. So I'm full in support. I think President Acosta's right. We have the 7-0, but we need to do it in a planned way. Thank you. And I am excusing myself. I'm going to be joining the Planning Commission meeting.
Again, in regards to this gas meter situation, at least he got the courtesy of getting a call back. I think I reported this a few months ago. There is an alternative plan if you don't want a meter consistently, not just the meter, what they do to your property. I went on that tour, all of us went on that tour, and the gentleman told us what we have to do. They didn't give me a card. I have a card. I have placed four calls to that party I'm supposed to talk to. I have yet to receive a call back. I have an area where I always had a meter inside. There was a sealed room, cement sealed room, and I was told I do not have to accept that meter in there. They didn't even ask me. They just got there and started working, and that was the end. Or they made sure the gas lines are all. But again, they say, they tell you one thing and they do the opposite, okay? Or every time you call in, well, like I said, at least you got a call. I called four times. I've yet to get a call. I've yet to get a call, and I think we, we as councils should really be pushing this thing right now, and I'm fair to the end that the city clerk is right on top of it. That's why I have one more comment. College High Community Council will be having their night in the Heights. This is usually, and I think we're going to have two of these years. Is this correct?
If we can, yes.
If we can, we're going to have two. It's a get-together up in College Heights on this coming Friday from 6:30 to 9:30 at 1700 Block Lorin...
1700 Lorain.
1700 Lorain, yes. And it's wonderful affair, there's beverages, food, a lot of people, and you can't imagine how many people from other areas of the city that come up there to visit, see what we have over at College Heights, and everyone as well. Thank you.
Jeff?
I'll just note, one, the ceremonies of Memorial Day that many of us attended, ceremony at City Park in Memorial Grove, and also in Charles Evans at the Soldiers Memorial there. Both were touching, both were inspiring. I'm sorry the more people didn't show up. That's really, you know, it's time to remember those who gave the ultimate sacrifice, and I know there were multiple events throughout the county, but I'm really hopeful that at some point we can build those events up. Again, we don't have the parade, that it was not feasible to continue the Memorial Day parade several years ago, but certainly those two events, and I know Councilwoman Goodman-Henshitz and Councilman Marmaroo were at City Park, and Councilman Waltman and I were at Charles Evans, those are just really important things to attend if you can do it. And on both occasions, with Councilwoman Goodman-Henshitz at City Park, and then on my own up at Charles Evans, we laid the wreath for the, by the citizens of Berks County in honor of fallen veterans, and really, I really feel strongly that with all the elected officers in the County of Berks, and I understand some of the commissioners were elsewhere, and that's understandable, but certainly we have a contingent of our officers in the County of Berks, any of whom could have represented the county there. It was our pleasure to do it, but I'm hoping in another year that elective officers of the County of Berks, someone will be at both of those events, but more importantly, the public in general attends them. Coming up on June 3, and I know this has been organized, I know Linda Calaher has been active in this, and Council President Acosta and Commissioner Barnhart, we will have a meeting June 3, 6:30 PM, at St. Mark's United Church of Christ to talk about the impact of the closing of the Buttonwood Street Bridge. That's certainly important for everyone, the 6th Ward, the 15th Ward, really all parts of the city, certainly important for the folks in Glen Side and Lower Glen Side. We had thought about having a meeting that night for the Glen Side Community Council. I think we will move that back a week to June 10, because I think this bridge closing meeting is really paramount for everyone to attend. West Reading will be having one a week later, so for the folks that live over in West Reading, it's really important for them to attend there, because it's impacting all of us. The bridge will be closing on or about July 5 to all traffic, pedestrian, bicycles, vehicular. It's going to be a two-year closure. At some point, the West Shore Bypass will be closed, and that will be evening kind of things, because the whole deck of the bridge needs to be redone. This is the first, well, it's really the second. The Schuylkill Avenue Bridge will be done. Hopefully by that point, that'll be entirely open, but consequent to that will be the closing of the Buttonwood Street Bridge. When that's done, closing of Penn Street Bridge. When that's done, the closing of Binghamton Street. Interspersed in there somewhere will be the closing of Schuylkill Avenue, the old railroad bridge, Jeff, I believe that's between your district and my district, that's around on the border there. Schuylkill Avenue will be closed at some point. I don't know the date for that, because that overbridge, which really doesn't have a name, over the railroad tracks, will be entirely rebuilt. So Schuylkill Avenue will be extremely impacted by that point. And then, if that's not enough, keep in mind September 22, 2022, because that is the, at this point, the date for the closure of a huge portion of the West Shore Bypass. There's no name again for that bridge, but if you're in West Reading at the Fishing Pier, the old Burt Light Fishing Dock, you look up, you see the high expanse of the bypass, that's falling apart. So in 2022, which seems a long time from now, but is really only seven years from now, that part of, the entire West Shore Bypass will be closed for a timeframe. So challenging is a minor word for what we're going to be seeing from now through the next decade of bridge repairs in this town, but again, most of these bridges are PennDOT bridges, with the exception of Buttonwood Street, which is the county. And, you know, back in the 50s, everybody was doing all this stuff, creating these bridges, and before and prior, Penn Street is 1932. But at some point, the work on these bridges was not done, and we are now going to be paying for that, because they've got to last another 50, 100 years, and now's the time to do it. Some of us will see it, some of us won't, some of us will, our grandchildren will see it, or our great-grandchildren, but it is certainly something to keep in mind as we go forward. So June 3 at 6:30 at St. Mark's UCC Windsor Redder. We hope to see a lot of folks there, and there's a lot to learn. And Linda, thank you. ReadingBridges.net is the website that you guys have created. People can go on there and get the full story.
Yeah, and that page is also, there's a link on the city's website and the county's website.
Okay, great. City and county websites, let us know.
Anybody else? Motion to adjourn. Would adjourn?